I call the October meeting of the Weston School Board to order. Everybody would please rise and join us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in heart.
Thank you. Chair moves for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Announcements, October 23rd Facilities Committee meeting at 7:00 AM right here. November 8th Teaching and Learning Special Board meeting at 7:30 AM in the ESC Conference Room A. And November 18th Policy Committee meeting at 5:30 PM, followed by regular School Board meeting here at 6:00. That's it for announcements, and at this time, for the share of the success, I would like to invite Principal Urfo up to share the success with us.
All right, good evening. I am excited to share this evening. Some of our national merit semifinalists. Both of these students, so Raul and Rohan, are two of our current seniors. Last fall, around this time, actually this week last fall, they took the PSAT, so it's the pre-SAT test. And in that test, when students do incredibly well, and I'll share some stats here in just a little bit, but when they do incredibly well on that, they end up being advanced further in the National Merit Scholarship Program. So these two students, so Rohan Nella and then Raul Jordan, and their parents are here in the back. They took that test and did incredibly well. Out of 1.3 million juniors last year, 21,000 schools across, in 21,000 schools across the country, students took the PSAT. The semifinalists, these two standing up here represent this group, are a pool that represent less than 1% of high school seniors across the country, including the highest-scoring seniors in each state. So as the students, as these two took that test last year, they scored incredibly well, and they can choose to share if they'd like to, but that's up to them. But they did incredibly well, and we learned in September of this fall that they did qualify as semifinalists. And what that means now is they completed an application that we just submitted last week. Right under the wire, we got everything turned in. And the two of them now move on in the process to be recognized potentially as actual national merit finalists. We will not know the results of that until this coming spring. We actually find out in April of 2025 is when we find out. So they have a long wait between now and then. But I just want to recognize them and congratulate them, and also thank the School Board and everyone within our school district, literally from kindergarten preschool, for some of them, all the way up to their current teachers, for all the wonderful work that they do. And also, I do want to take a moment and recognize both Raul and Rohan. They are incredibly involved, and I asked them to share some of their involvement in our school with you, so we'll do that here in a moment. But you will learn that they are incredibly involved and give back just as much as they take from our school and make our school a better place because of their involvement. So with that, I am going to ask them to each just kind of share a little bit about their education experience with us and highlight some of the things that they have accomplished since they've been with us. And they can also share a little bit about their future plans. I told Raul this morning, we were maybe a little short on sub this morning, so spending some time subbing this morning. So I walked in, and both of them happened to be in the class that I was subbing in, which was fantastic. And Rohan came up and asked, now, do you want us to say something again at the Board meeting? I said yes and went through it. And then we kind of joked, I said, now let's go to Raul, and he walked over and said, keep it under seven minutes though, Raul. Nothing more than seven minutes. But I think he figured out pretty quickly that we were joking around with him. But I'll go ahead and have Raul, if you want to speak a little bit to your experience at Mount Westhaka.
Yeah, great. So I'm Raul Jordan, obviously a senior here, here with my parents, my mom and Amy. A little bit about me at the school, I've been involved for soccer, boy soccer for the last five years, track and field for four years, science Olympia last year, and involved in the crew this year. Some of my favorite classes have kind of been AP Bio and AP US History. I think those have shaped me a lot. And as much as I'd like to say that I am the only reason why I got as score as I did, I'm proud of my environment. So I'd like to thank my parents, and I'd like to thank the classes I've had, and all the teachers I've had in the past years.
Hi, I'm Rohan. I'm here with my mom and my dad in the back. I got a perfect score on the PSAT, so I'd better say it to one of Raul's. But yeah, basically, I'm involved in robotics and math league at our school, which, you know, obviously have done really well in the past few years. So, you know, I just want to, you know, just show that, like, I started in these programs with, and these teams were like eight members big, and now, you know, the robotics team is 40, you know, members, math league is like 27 currently. And so I just want to thank the school district for, you know, giving us these opportunities to do this. I used to be worried that because I go to a small school, I know people who go to like big, you know, giant schools like YZ and Minnetoka, I'd always get scared and like feel overshadowed. But it's nice that like with the connections that we have here and the support from my family and the support from our district that we can do really cool things like this and get awards like this. So, yeah, thank you.
Congratulations. And these guys are going to want to shake hands.
Absolutely.
We'll start here.
We're waiting to hear good news in April.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Do they have to do any more testing or anything? They just, the test has been done, right? Now, what's, what's the determination between semifinalists and finalists?
So...
I don't know if people heard my question. I asked what this, what's, what happens between semifinalists and finalists? What are the other criteria they look at? I'm just real curious on that.
So both had to put together a pretty extensive application process. So they learned about it in, I think, the third week of January, or excuse me, September. And then last week had to enter their final application, basically. And with that, what National Merit will look at is they will look at their academic success, how they scored on the test. But now they also look at letters of recommendation. They look at the rigorous coursework that they took. They look at a number of different pieces, so both of them had an opportunity to really sell themselves on, I would call it a rather extensive. You, you both should feel very prepared for applying for colleges. A lot of those different pieces to be able to prepare. So what will happen now is the National Merit program will go ahead and review all those applicants, so again, recognizing 1% of this year's seniors. And what they do is they look through that 1% within the nation, and then they choose from that. So it's a very selective group. But yes, they did, there was maybe 11 or 12 different pieces of information that they had the opportunity to put together and present to the program. So they've been working on that for the last few weeks. You're welcome.
Good luck, guys.
Congratulations, and you're welcome to stay for the Board meeting if you want entertainment or you're...
We're entertaining now, as we're moving up. At this point, are there any citizen or employee who briefly wants to address the Board?
Thank you.
If not, we'll move on to the Student Representative Report. And I guess that's... Okay, all right. Then at this point, we'll move on to the Treasurer's Report. Heidi will be delivering that report tonight.
We also want to schedule before that, though, where he is. I'm just going to record briefly on the Superintendent.
Thank you.
I'm ready for it, so I'm...
Congratulations.
It's about time again when the School Board evaluates the performance of Superintendent Kevin Ford over the past year, and each Board member, as well as Kevin's administrative team, evaluates him in terms of the goals and initiatives he identifies and seeks to pursue, along with his ability to communicate the details of those initiatives and his ability to lead the district in accomplishing agreed upon goals. So along with the many ongoing efforts he's involved in supporting the efforts of the district, such as MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, and supporting implementation of things like the New Read Act, which is the wide-ranging literacy initiative mandated by the state legislature. A large focus of Kevin's time was particularly dedicated to focusing on the district's facility improvements plan. If you recall, the improvement process began with extensive discussions and surveys of all stakeholders with community surveys and parent and community input sessions and staff focus groups. And from all of that input came a smart package of facilities improvements that Kevin spent countless hours that fall explaining to people out in our community. Kevin very clearly understood and communicated what these improvements would mean for the safety and learning opportunities for our kids. His tireless determination to get the community's support for the bond project played a huge factor in the referendum passing. Security upgrades and outdoor projects have already begun, and we're all excited to watch the rest of the work unfold. Early this year, Kevin proposed that it made sense to address our district branding at a time when our buildings were going to be renovated. And to this end, a professional design firm was hired, and student, staff, and the community were engaged to provide input on this. This past July, the design group under Kevin's leadership landed on a sharp new set of images to coincide with our building improvements. A few things that staff members noted in their evaluations of Kevin's performance this past school year: He leads with a continual growth mindset. He leads by example and cares deeply for our district. He's a great communicator. He relates well on a personal level, yet provides the necessary leadership to guide important decisions for a district. So with that, on behalf of the Board, Kevin, I would just say thank you for another great year.
Thank you. Heidi, thank you for all your work on that as well. This is a nice process and something we really wanted to do, so thank you.
Yeah, we want to let people know what's going on.
That's right.
Obviously, when you get to work with a high-functioning Board and then a talented team, you get good results, and it's hard to know where one effort starts. And again, but I take that just on behalf of our whole team, because there's many hands involved in all of that work, and appreciative to be part of it. So we love our time at Westhaka. It's great working with you.
So just so unclear, we're keeping him?
Yep.
Now we will watch the Treasurer's Report.
Yeah, okay. All right. Mount American Legion, Special Services, $1,250. Ryan Gearhartson, Hilltop Primary School, $1,000. Anonymous, Hilltop Primary School, $230. Mount Farmers Market, Shirley Hills Primary School, $100. Everly Farms LLC, Shirley Hills Primary School, $828.10. Steve and Mary Ann Miller, Shirley Hills Primary School, $1,000. Blackbaud Giving Fund, Shirley Hills Primary School, $200. GMSPTO, Grandview Middle School, $3,621.68. Anonymous, Mount Westhaka High School, $40. Charities Aid Foundation, Mount Westhaka High School, $87.32. Westhaka Community Ed Football, Mount Westhaka High School Football, $13,332.66. Northwest Hocka Lions, Westhaka Community Theater, $5,000. Northwest Hocka Lions Music in the Park, $2,500. Butch Humbert, Larry XL Memorial Scholarship, $100. Wiser Insurance Agency, Wiser Insurance Scholarship, $500. Mount Farmers Market, GMS Student Senate, $100. Be Like Tommy Project, Captain's Club, $5,880. Mount Farmers Market, Captain's Club, $100. Jubilee Foods, Hockets Dance Team, $100. Doc &amp; Lift, Hockets Dance Team, $300. Kreggo Inc., Mount Westhaka Cross Country Team, $186. The total year-to-date for fiscal year '25 is $70,839. If we'll catch up with any, any additional information from Treasurer Ralph Harrison when he returns.
Thank you for stopping in tonight on that. Now we'll move on to the Finance Report. Kathy, we're all waiting, so...
Mark has a new computer, so... I'm not an Apple person, so it's always rejecting my touch. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that. Good evening, Board. Tonight, we will be presenting our, the findings of our '23-'24 audit. But before I turn the floor over to Andy, I wanted to give my brief monthly Board Report first. Okay. Enrollment, as you know, we, the first month-plus of school is underway and is closed out. This slide before you shows our student enrollment counts as of October 1st. And you can see there's four clusters of numbers. The far left-hand represents our elementary school and grades early childhood through grade four. The next category is our middle school, grades five, six, and seven, and our high school, grades eight through 12. And then lastly, on the far right-hand side, is the collection of all the district enrollment together. The red bar shows where we ended last year, was our final student enrollment count. The black bar is where we set our adopted budget. And lastly, on the far right-hand of the gray is our October 1st count. So you can see that we are serving three more students than we did last year, which is great news. We graduated a large class who we had planned, again, usually we run conservative, so we were planning on less. And most importantly, at this point, we are serving 22 students higher than what we had planned in our adopted budget. So we're, we're pleased with that. Our student enrollment is the major driver of our revenue. And so each month, as I come back during the school year, as always, we'll continue to monitor student enrollment. And in a few months, we'll take the collection of these fall enrollments, and then we will hold those into our revised budget. Any questions on enrollment? All right. Financial data, revenue and expenditures through the end of September. We have received $3,655,000 or 7.5% of our adopted budget of $40,706,000. Expenditures indicate through the end of September, we have spent $6,944,000 or 17.8% of our revised, excuse me, adopted budget, $40,190,000. Our revenues and expenditures are both trending on track according to the prior year. Just a couple other quick notes. Last School Board meeting, you approved our adopted budget at maximum. That information was submitted to Hennepin County, as well as the Minnesota Department of Education at maximum by the deadline of September 30th. And the final increase was 3.89%, is what we submitted on behalf of the Board. Our Truth and Taxation hearing will be held here prior to the regular December meeting on December 9th. As I mentioned, we'll be having our audit report tonight. Statute indicates that school districts must publish their district revenue and expenditure report one week after the acceptance of the, of the audit. And so that will be displayed in Saturday's Laker, so you can look forward to seeing that. And, and lastly, without any further ado, it's time to introduce Andy Grace of Bergen KDB. Again, he will be presenting a summary of the '23-'24 audit. And on behalf of the Westhaka School Board, I'd like to publicly thank Andy for being here tonight, and also to his team for their professional nature, their customer service. Bergen KDB, they share our same goals of being good stewards of fiscal dollars and very transparent reporting. So thank you, Andy.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight. Here to present the audit results for the year ended June 30th, 2024. And to start, wanted to talk about our different components of our audit. Part of our role as your auditor is to provide an opinion on the financial statements or assurance that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. And happy to report that we are issuing a clean, unmodified opinion on the financial statement, which is the best that we can give as your auditor. Also included in the financial statements is our report on compliance with major federal programs. We tested the special education cluster this year. And one thing I wanted to highlight is that the district meets the definition of a low-risk auditee. So we have less coverage needed in terms of our test work. So instead of needing to test 40% of the district's federal expenditures, we test 20%. And again, with that testing of the special education cluster, we had no compliance-related matters noted and no internal control findings. So a clean report when it comes to federal programs.
Hey, Andy, I meant to ask this in more...
Sure.
In past years, we always had this finding of not having the redundancy of the internal people. I'm not saying it exactly the right way.
Sure.
I noticed that wasn't here this time.
Sure, and so that particular report does not have, this particular report does not have that finding. And if I take a look, let me just reference the reports here. That condition does still exist. So I think, yeah, so when it comes to our Government Auditing Standards Report, I think I have a typo on the, on the presentation materials. If you look at the communications letter, there is, there is a note there related to the lack of segregation of accounting duties.
That's segregation.
Yep, no, thank you for pointing that out. And so that, again, that's kind of that top bullet point. There is one internal control finding when it comes to government auditing standards. And again, it's related to that lack of segregation of accounting duties. And just wanted to highlight that here real quick. When it comes to the financial report, when we present that information in that Government Auditing Standards Report, we do present that, again, at a material weakness level or a significant deficiency level. And we do have that finding at a significant deficiency level. So it's not the most severe internal control finding, but it's one that still needs to be acknowledged for reporting purposes. So we want to clarify that there for the record. When it comes to our Minnesota Legal Compliance Report, which is that second bullet point there, the Office of the State Auditor issues legal compliance guides that cover certain state statutes, including the district's deposit investments, conflicts of interest, contracts and bidding, and other miscellaneous provisions there. We had no findings to report related to compliance related to those state statutes. And then the last component of our audit is our communications letter. We again go through and report any matters identified as a result of our audit. And again, we had the one significant deficiency related to a lack of segregation of accounting duties. And then it also includes all other required communication that talks about, again, our responsibilities, significant estimates involved in preparing the financial statements, other matters that we consider when planning and performing our audit procedures, as well as financial analysis, a legislative update, and then some emerging issues. The financial communications that we include, take a look at a couple different things. We take a look at some trend data, but wanted to start by taking a look at state sources of revenue and specifically the General Education Aid Formula allowance. So General Education Aid is a function of this formula allowance along with enrollment at the district. And here in 2024, that formula allowance was at $7,138, which was a 4% increase over 2023. When we take a look at the enrollment numbers, we first start to take a look at the resident ADM or the students that could be served within the district boundaries. And that number was fairly flat comparing 2023 to 2024, declining just four to 2,692. And to calculate total ADM served, we need to take into account the open enrollment process. So students going elsewhere or students coming in, and there is a net loss overall, and ultimately led to total ADM served of 2,404, a decline from 2,412 in 2023.
So that compares to the enrollment number that she just presented of 24... It is about 2404, right? If you go back one slide.
Sure.
Okay, so that's actual enrollment, 2404 at the bottom, right? And then overall, students available for us to serve in the district is 2692?
That would be if only those that lived in the district boundaries attended. Those, that would be your kind of maximum amount that you could serve.
Got it, all right, okay.
All right, going on to general fund sources of revenue. I just wanted to highlight here that there was an increase overall in general fund revenues of $2.6 million, or about 7% as we saw in that General Education Aid formula chart there. 4% represents that increase in formula allowance. There's also an additional special education aid that was provided in that state sources of revenue number here for 2024. There's also an increase in the property tax levy that increased to $10.9 million here in 2024. And then other revenue sources also increased, which include donations, federal sources of revenue, as well as investment earnings. And with the increased market rates, we did see increases in that category. And then, again, also includes the federal sources of revenue, which you see increased significantly in 2021 with the COVID-19 pandemic-related funds that were available, and those continued to be available through 2024. So we'll probably start to see some of, some of those resources decline in future periods. To take a look at how those different categories make up overall general fund revenues, 64% are state revenues, 28% come from property tax levies, and the remaining 8% are in that other category. The next chart that we have is the budget to actual results. The Board adopted a budget that called for $37.7 million in revenue. $37.7 million in expenditures and anticipated an increase in fund balance of about $55,000 for the year. That budget was amended with some better information becoming available. And the final budget was at just over $39 million in revenue, $39.5 million in expenditures and anticipated a potential decline in fund balance of $443,000. I did want to recognize the district and, you know, how accurately those projections came in on the revenue side. Looking at the final budget there, actual revenues came in within 1% of budgeted amounts, or excuse me, within 1% of the original budgeted amount and just 0.1% on that final budgeted amount. So just a $55,000 variance there. And it was between local property taxes and state revenue sources. And it had to do with the coding of the county apportionment and having a bit less even anticipated on the state revenue side. But overall, minimal difference there compared to budgeted amounts. On the expenditure side, expenditures came in at $39,126,000, $402,000 less than anticipated. A 1% variance, again, with, with that final budget. And most of that variance came in the sites and buildings category. That was $323,000, more than anticipated with more contracted services and other maintenance coming in higher than anticipated. And all other categories related to wages, benefits, and just the overall conservative nature of the budget in terms of full, full positions being budgeted and then those coming in a bit less than, than anticipated. After taking into account other financing sources and uses, ultimately did have a surplus or an increase in fund balance overall of about $94,000. When we take a look at the overall operations here over the last five years, again, with the surplus here in 2024, fund balance increased to $6,271,000. And if we look at the second part of that chart down below, there is several different categories, one being not spendable. In the middle, we see restricted amounts. We have amounts that are committed for separation and retirement benefits. And then we have some assignments for specific purposes, and that leaves what is left over, and that is the unassigned fund balance. And there is a policy the Board has adopted related to unassigned fund balance to maintain between 8% and 18% of prior year expenditures. And the district is in compliance with that policy at the end of the year. We did see that those restricted categories declined here in 2024 with the purchase of some land. The operating capital resources were utilized, so that went from 499,000 to zero here in 2024. And then with the offset to that, there was an increase in some of the assigned categories. Did have an increase in amounts assigned for special education, class size reduction, as well as an amount assigned for furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And then the remaining increase occurred in that unassigned fund balance category, which went from $3,162,000 to $3,374,000 at the end of the year. Another way to look at financial health is just to take a look at cash investment balances at the district, and this is specific to the general fund. With the positive operation, we also saw an increase in cash investment balances, which went from $8,173,000 to $8,291,000. That is significantly more than what, what is in that unassigned fund balance. And again, we do have some... And again, we do have some amounts set aside for specific purposes. And there are certain components of cash and investment balances that relate to property taxes levied for subsequent years, but wanted to highlight those two numbers here over that five-year period. And then another metric that we take a look at to measure financial health is unrestricted fund balances a percentage of expenditures. And this would combine all committed, assigned, and unassigned amounts, and gives you a metric to compare yourselves in terms of financial health the prior years, but also to other school districts here in the state of Minnesota. And again, ending the year at the highest in the five years presented at eighteen point seven percent. And a reminder, when looking at that comparatively to other school districts, back in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, that is when the COVID nineteen funding began. And so some districts did not utilize that immediately or did have the resources set aside as a result of some of that additional funding. So just wanted to have that in terms of perspective when evaluating those results. Did want to highlight two other special revenue funds in the financial statements, one being, first one here being the food service fund. This fund has experienced some significant changes over the five years presented, especially with the COVID nineteen pandemic and some additional federal funding that was available during the two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year. And then with the state's efforts in providing free meals to all students, we did see an increase in revenues in two thousand and twenty-four, increasing meals served. And ultimately, revenues came in at two million one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. And that was about perfect in terms of what expenditures came through for the year, the surplus of one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So something to maintain some awareness of going forward. But the fund balance that was established over that period, again, with some of the additional federal funding, did increase fund balance to the highest level of the years presented at about one point two million dollars. And the district does have some capital needs in mind as it relates to that.
What are the other funding sources?
So specific here, it could be any sale of assets. And I'm guessing that's what it is just based on the dollar amount there. So if any assets are sold, those are technically other financing sources. The next fund we have is the community service fund. This fund did experience an increase in two thousand and twenty-four, and it is at the highest point in the five years presented in terms of revenues and expenditures with increased programming, the school day care program. We did see an overall surplus here of about a hundred and ten thousand dollars, increasing fund balance to two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars at the end of the year. Again, do have certain components there that are restricted, majority being for community education. The last chart that we have is our highlight of the government-wide state of net position. And this is all funds combined. It includes all assets, long-term assets and long-term liabilities associated with the district's financial position. And here in two thousand and twenty-four, we did see an overall increase in net position. It went from about twenty-three point seven million up to twenty-nine point four million dollars. Part of that is the improvement on the unrestricted net position. Big driver in terms of why that's negative, the district does have to carry a net pension liability on its books, something that the district won't have to write a check for, but does have to acknowledge the portion of unfunded pension liability at the state level. And two other things to highlight, you will see a significant increase in overall assets going from ninety-eight point five million up to a hundred and fifty-three million dollars in two thousand and twenty-four. There are cash and investment resources related to the two thousand and twenty-four bond issuance. So just based on the timing of those projects, you do have some cash on hand as that gets underway. And then you also see the offset on the long-term liability side, which increased from fifty-eight point five million to about ninety-eight, ninety-nine point nine million dollars at the end of the year. That's a high-level look at our audit results. Next, I'd just like to open it up for any questions.
I have a question getting back to the segregation.
Sure.
Have it marked here.
I think it's at the very first, very first thing in the communications.
I'm aware of the reasoning and things like that, but is this systemic from an economy of scale of districts generally this size? That it's a matter of maybe, and if I understand it correctly, it's segregation. In other words, more people should be interspersed with oversight on the budget instead of just what would appear to be two people?
Yeah, I wouldn't say necessarily the budget, but just the significant accounting functions in terms of payroll process, accounts payable, proceeding, and then the overall financial closing and reporting process. There are individuals that need to have different levels of access to the accounting system and could perform multiple accounting functions. And that's why we have it at the significant deficiency level, because we do believe there's compensating or mitigating controls and oversight to limit that to a material weakness, which is the most severe level. So I think, like, as you said, it is a function of the size of the office staff and needing to, you know, determine from a cost-benefit standpoint, you know, would additional individuals to limit further access be beneficial overall?
Do you see this as a systemic thing for generally speaking of, say, relatively speaking for school districts of this size and staffing level and everything else? There should be a common, there should be a commonality to that.
I would say that there are a good number of school districts in a very similar position just based on that size. And also districts much larger that continue to battle with that just because it is, it is a high bar in terms of internal control that we evaluate.
So just wanted to make sure I heard you right. So you said that there, like, the systems were able to mitigate some of those risks that.
Correct. So even though an individual might be able to record a transaction within the, you know, general ledger, but also prepare reports for the board, for example, you know, or make direct adjustments to the general ledger through the journal entry process, we do look at the controls that are in place to mitigate that, you know, access to perform multiple functions and ensuring that that journal entry, for example, has additional sets of eyes and reviews on it. So we take a look at those processes there to make sure that those are, they're implemented.
So the concern, isn't mitigated, isn't being, isn't able to be mitigated by the systems?
So correct. So it's in order to be free from that particular finding, you would have to have additional individuals and limit the access that others have to perform.
Okay, thank you.
And the amount, and the potential for gaining a certain amount of safety issue on that. At this time, it's not worth balancing the cost of obtaining that.
And that's ultimately a kind of a board or management decision kind of uncomfortable.
We've managed this finding for a number of years. It's funny because of, probably not the right word, but Kathy's never leveraged this. She'd be one that would say, I'll take another staff person. But she's never said, Kevin, you should really. But I think our district, as Andy mentioned, a number of districts, this is what I found also is pretty common. And I think we try with our staff that there's checks and balances with the staff that we have to really avoid issues that could arise.
And thus you do your due diligence. It sounds like this has happened, obviously, the way you're talking in the past. It's something we've dealt with, and you have a certain amount of, obviously, the due diligence is to report it. But you feel that professionally that we're mitigating anything that would potentially be a problem.
Correct, because there are several instances I could point to where it is at that material weakness level that where we don't believe those steps have been taken.
Yeah, typically, it's been a finding, I've been on the board eleven years, and it's been the same finding every year.
Yep.
That's why I said it wasn't on the slide.
That was just a test.
Make sure we were listening. Okay.
I have one question about a note.
Sure.
And I'll just read it. It said, it says, "Recent experience demonstrates that the legislated revenue increases have not been sufficient to meet instructional program needs and increased costs due to inflation." Is that, is that just a standard thing that you typically put in there? Because we need to supplement our revenue with other funding?
Yeah, I think it just goes just from an inflationary standpoint to, you know, trying to correlate that with the percentage increases that are coming from the legislature. And obviously, you know, over time, there is just not there to fully absorb some of the cost increases that you're seeing.
Yeah, okay.
And we got that one bump, what was that, twenty-four? And then we got the four percent bump. But we knew that wasn't gonna be the standard, that it was gonna be a one-year thing. And you'd probably see more of the two percent, two and a half percent bumps that you could see.
Andy, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. Any other questions, feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Move on to teaching and learning. Mark?
I guess this is who's that we're keeping Kathy too?
Yeah.
Kathy, we're keeping you too.
I was gonna remark Kathy when he said less than one percent. I was gonna say, so there is room for.
Well, it was point one in the one thing, wasn't it?
It's getting a little bit harder, but still.
Well, I'm gonna try and deliver some good news tonight, too.
See if we keep you. Pressure, no pressure.
Let me swing the bath here. Just have, just a couple of updates for you. Actually, it's a really exciting news. So there's a concept, a concept of what we might see here in a couple of years. And I wanted to give you an update from my neck of the woods. What I work on, you know, is the program, the course development. And we've been working very hard on figuring out machining, the Certified Nursing Assistance Program, EMR, EMT. What do these rooms look like? What are the floor plans? What's the equipment? We're quickly moving into the phase where, let's talk about the courses, the course content. We need to get certified by the state. We need our teachers to have their career tech licenses, all these different things. I just wanted to give you an update where we are with all of that. It is an exciting time. I will say that, you know, there's many things when we go into our different careers and fields. I didn't know that I was going to become a machining expert, but I think I could probably stand on two feet and really talk, good talk about machining with you. But in this area, we have just a great partner with Dunwoody Technical College. They're gonna be a player with us as we develop this, and I really appreciate that. So we've identified our equipment. We have a network of vendors, manufacturers, organizations like Dunwoody. They're gonna be partners with us. And then this process of getting a career tech certification has started at the Department of Ed. And we want that because if at minimum, you can tap into our career tech levy dollars to help support and pay for these type of programs, which is very important. So machining is on its way. And then we get into Certified Nursing Assistance, Emergency Medical Responder, Technical Emergency Responder, or Emergency Medical Technician Programs. Those are even more complicated because you have to have a certified program that's not only blessed by the Department of Ed, but it's blessed by the Department of Health. So Jolene and I are gonna be meeting with someone at the Department of Ed next Wednesday. And we're gonna be starting that process and really get into the details of what's the timeline, what are the tasks involved? And again, we're gonna be in great shape. And one of the most important things that we have to have in place is a medical director. And our parent community member, Kevin Soprle, who's an emergency medicine physician with Ridgeview, has volunteered way back, year and a half ago, to say, hey, I'm gonna be your guy. So we got, we have that in place. And then with the CNA program, we have to find a nurse that has assisted living experience, long-term care experience. And they would be delivering the instruction in that program along with a teacher of record that we'll have here in the district. So that is happening as we speak. And the other thing that I really appreciate, this whole last year, my work has been just getting word out about, we have these programs coming. And right here in our community, Presbyterian Homes, Harrison Bay, Ridgeview, they have been signing us up. How can we be a partner with you? What can we do to support you? If you need the equipment, if you need a certified nurse, what is it? So they're gonna be with us along this way also. And then there's a company called MATA. MATA is a nonprofit organization in St. Louis Park, and I went over there last week. And what they do, they're like a clearinghouse for hospitals, clinics, medical centers across the nation on medical equipment, devices, just consumable supplies. So through the way, they go through here. I got to see this huge warehouse of materials, and they are gonna be a supporter of us also, where we do not have to pay retail for materials and equipment. It'd be very deeply discounted. And what they do with those dollars, they take those dollars and they're supporting the building of hospitals and clinics in their local countries. So when we purchase things at deeply discounted prices, it also goes to help others less fortunate than us. So this is where we are in this whole process. It's a great place to be. We know our equipment, we know what the layouts are gonna be. Now Jolene and I are getting going with the course development, who's gonna be teaching these courses, all these details. Because a year from January, we have to put these courses into our registration packet. It's sooner than you think. So some really good things. So any, any questions?
Do you anticipate that all being new staff? Or do you anticipate some of the staff being trained in new fields?
We would hope it be, we'll start with existing staff.
Existing staff.
We're in development. Okay, just, just want to hit just a couple very brief quick review cycle updates. Just a few things for you to be aware. We have new two thousand and twenty Minnesota ELA, or English Language Arts Standards and Benchmarks. So this is the normal work that continues on. That we have to embed all of these new English Language Arts benchmarks into our K-12 curriculum by the end of the school year. And we're in, we're in fine pace with that. What I wanted to point out for you, though, the changes from the current standards to the new standards. There's very intentional work around grammar, that it used to be grammar was taught isolated. And now they're bringing them in. As you're in the writing development process, you bring the grammar instruction in. And that makes a whole lot of sense. There's still room for direct instruction with grammar concepts, but we're bringing it into the writing process. But the biggest change that you'll see would be intentional benchmarks, bringing in literature from our Minnesota Native Tribes, Dakota, Inishina'avi, Indian authors that have, they have literature, they have different resources that now in our benchmarks, specifically in English, also in science, we have to find resources that bring in that voice. And that's coming along just fine. But you'll see a little bit of different flavor of the different literature and books that kids are reading because of those benchmarks. And then the last thing I would just mention as a change is that in the current standards, each grade level focuses on different types of writing. Now going forward, every grade level is gonna hit the four big areas of argument, persuasion, informatory, and creative writing. It just happens every year. So there is some work we're going through just adjusting our curriculum programming. And that means something different for a first grader than it will be like an eighth grader or a senior. But that is intentional because there's a recognition that kids need to be proficient in all those areas and be successful outside of when they graduate from school. And then in spring two thousand and twenty-six, we have the first MCA four, MCA four reading test. It'll be some changes coming through with that test. And another night to talk about that. And the other, the other thing I wanted to mention to you, there hasn't been a lot of buzz about this, but it has been a big deal in the science world that this is the first year across Minnesota that we're offering, all districts are offering a high school or a science course. And that's a big deal, that that's one of the four core areas of science that has been neglected a little bit. So not a huge change, but the right-hand side, the new sequence shows you what currently now is a sequence of science learning. And now our ninth graders are taking earth science, all ninth graders are taking earth science.
Why the change in the sequence, I guess?
Because we didn't have a spot for earth science at the high school level. Earth science would stop at the middle school, at the eighth grade. And now in this new sequence, it actually has a home along with chemistry and physics and biology, earth science. and biology. Earth Science is another one of the four pillars.
What's the difference? So, like, the old sequence had two years of physical science.
Correct.
The new, one has two years of Earth Science. What's the, what do you see as that difference?
So, basically, what they did, you know, in the old sequence, you had physical science in middle school, in sixth grade, and then you had physical science in high school, in the ninth grade.
And now you have Earth Science.
You just have it, you just have physical science in the eighth grade. So, what happens to the, the eighth graders that took Earth Science last, or ninth graders that took Earth Science last year, and then again this year? They're not. We went through a whole transition. Went through a whole transition.
So, they have to finish the cycle?
Yes.
Oh, this is only for new?
New students.
Yes, 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 yes.
Every?
One thing that came out with physical sciences, some of the concepts for a sixth grader and the depth that you can get into that was probably more age-appropriate as they continued on for eighth grade. So, this was across some of that discussion. So, starting some of that later was beneficial.
Isn't Earth Science sort of traditionally a ninth grade? At least what I grew up.
Back in our day it was.
Yes.
Back in our day it was. And that, that shifted and changed.
Okay.
Where it was standard and even.
Once the dinosaur died out, we didn't need as much Earth Science anymore.
Now, we're back here. And then, the other big development is, it'll be the first, this spring, will be the new MCA4 science test. And the way I would describe the MCA4 science test, these, these assessments just go deeper and expect more rigor out of the students. So, this is gonna be more and more, given a science problem, and I'll apply your skills to solve it, where there could be more than like one way to solve it. Now, how they're gonna figure that out on a standardized test, they say they figured it out. Unfortunately, it stays pretty tight on showing us samples out of it this time. But we'll have lots to talk about after the administration here, any problem made. But that is coming up this spring. So, a lot of great things going on, and really excited about the work that's happening at the high school and our programming, and just more and more information.
Exciting times, Kathy. This is extra special.
Longer is another way to say it. So, first of all, we've really had an incredible start to the school year in so many different facets. And I would just start by saying it's, it's the engagement of many that make that possible. It also is, you talked about, it seems kind of minor, but the warm weather has just made things like homecoming, we just had great weather for our homecoming and our homecoming parade, a community gathered, and it's just, some of those things that make the boundary, the West Tonka area, just a really special, special area. You get to hear about the alumni breakfast, and you have our alumni coming in, and they're so proud to come back, and they tell stories of what's familiar to them, and just, just thankful that, one, there's just a lot of engagement from our community, from our staff, and then you have these moments like homecoming that bring it together. And you, we're part of something really special, and I feel very thankful to be a superintendent here. I feel thankful working with you as a school board. I'm gonna highlight some of the efforts that have been going on and some of the results. And so, this fall, we've, we've gotten a lot of updates about different rankings and scores. And one thing I love about the staff, the team that I get to work with, is as we're proud of what we're accomplishing, we also know that there's room for improvement, and how do we continue to move forward? And so, this represents our students, and we have, we have a lot of really talented students, and we have a lot of support for parents, not just with their own kids, but with our community. Our staff is focused, they're intentional about their instruction. We have some good systems in place, and you got someone that's about as humble as they can come, Mark Fenright, who just has a really good interest and direction of how we go about things. And so, he can take things like the REED Act, and that's all directed at Mark, of how we can take some state laws and really engage with our staff to make good benefit out of it. And so, you look at some of these, and they're, it's really some nice acknowledgement of our students, but really collectively, how people have come together to make these improvements. It's exciting seeing some of the construction that's going on, and some of you have seen this time lapse, but this is a time lapse of, of the tennis courts. And I'm just gonna play it for this group. It's about 16 seconds. It goes fast, but you can see that in June, we had some rain, and then you can see these formulating, these courts. And it's a, it's really been a great experience seeing these come up. Just this morning, I had, I had some people that are with the pickleball community, and they were out there looking at the shed of how they can roll their nets in one of those sheds and roll it out. And they were so complimentary, so complimentary of just the thought that went into this. And there's a theme of what I'm gonna be saying, is how people come together. And when we did this design group, we had people that represented the tennis community, and Brian was part of that, and we had people that represented the pickleball community. We had our coaches, we had talked to students, we had admin, and we came up with this design that we're just so excited about. And it really will be some phenomenal courts that are gonna serve us so long. I think one thing where you have a number of you that have been on this board long enough, we know some of the struggles of the past tennis courts. And so, going post-tension here, knowing that, you know, we're setting this next generation, hopefully with less headache, by taking something that's gonna crack less, that's gonna hold there. How you can navigate and spectate, we thought about the fans, we thought about the community of how they could use this during the day and not on our campus. There's just a lot of intentional thought, but the DNA and the fingerprints are with many. There's a lot of people that gave input and really pleased about where that's coming. So, where we said they should be doing asphalt now on the site Wednesday, Thursday, and that's intentional, because our buses are not running Wednesday, Thursday, and if we're gonna do that road, we gotta try to find a day. So, luckily, the weather is starting, it's still cooperating with us. I, you know, you're two weeks out, and you say it hasn't rained all of September, but I bet it's gonna rain like crazy over MEA. And just happy that we're able to put down that asphalt. You're gonna see that the, the netting and the fences are going up starting next week, so it's gonna start taking more of a shape with the asphalt and that. The court surface is gonna go on next spring, and people would ask when, and I'd say, if you can tell me weather, first tell me what to call for snow days ahead of time, and then tell me when this is gonna begin. But once it's warm enough that we can put that seal coat down, and then that final layer, then they're gonna be used. So, that's really what we're waiting for. This project has moved along really well, successful project. The other one that we've come, are completing is the security at Hilltop Shirley Hills and also our Early Learning Center. And so, that's door monitoring, that's lockdown capability, it's hardening of glass, it's some of the strops for alert systems. And so, we're finishing that up this month, and we hope to have that activated here. Parts of it obviously are already. So, we have the glass installed, we have some of the door monitoring, but this working as a system, we hope that that's gonna be finalized here shortly. We're working through some of the training and programming with it, but really excited that we have a responsive system. And you talked about door monitoring, for example. And a door monitoring, if that door is open, that is a door that shouldn't be opened, and you don't swipe out, we're gonna get a notification. And so, part of this is our training with students and staff, so we use the systems correctly. But that's also good for us to know that there's not prompt open doors, and doors are locked in order to have a secure facility. And so, excited about that. With the lockdown system, people are gonna see this integrated, not just if there's a lockdown, but what we give people access to after school. So, when you're dropping off kids early in the morning for Adventure Club, or if it's a weekend activity, we're really working through, how do we stay in a good place with our programs, so they're not running into a locked door and can't get to what they wanna do, but also that we don't give people more access of a facility than they need to. And so, excited about what we're doing here.
So, with October, we're finishing up on these projects that I talked about, and the tennis courts will be ready spring of '25. We're also finishing the design of the high school today that went out, the plans went out for potential bidders. And so, we're gonna start giving tours for people that are interested in bidding this over the next couple of weeks and collecting those. One thing that's attractive about that project is it's, it's about 18 months in length, so it's not just a summer slam. There's, there's a length of the work. We're also finishing up our design of the middle school, and so, that is the school safety, security, moving the office to the entrance and improving the media center area. We're making an improvement to some special ed space, and then it's a lot of maintenance, safety, security. November, December, we're gonna get these bids in, and we're gonna start the design process on the Shirley Hills and Hilltop deferred maintenance projects, and then the high school stadium. And then, in spring of '25, we will be finished with the tennis pickleball area, and we are going to begin construction on the high school, expecting that around April, weather permitting. And so, we're gonna be going for, from April all the way till second week of August '26 is what we would expect. And so, we're, we're buckling in. We, we got a lot of work ahead of us. We feel very thankful for the work. I would say with the high school design, there's a lot to it. Mark talked about a sliver there with curriculum, but we talk about how we're gonna run safety, security. We're talking about our, our student support services and that new space that they have. Some of our teachers have new instructional walls, and how can we take full advantage of this space? And so, there's a lot of different elements that go beyond the construction that we're starting to prepare for. And again, a theme that you're gonna hear, we've had really, really great staff involvement, talking about their space and how we can really create the best space that we can for our students. And so, construction is an exciting time. We talked a little bit about branding and continue to, and you look at this timeline from last January to August, and there's different stages, and I'm not gonna read these to you, but there's a lot of intentional steps along the way that this process took. And we knew that if we passed a bond, this is the time that we really gotta check into, is our brand what it should be? And what came out of this is we saw that our district brand, which you see on the far right there, that had more of a change, our White Hawks, it was more of a refresh with, with that design. And so, really listening to our community, we did a community survey, over 500 respondents. We sent a postcard out. We really had good community engagement. It wasn't just parents, it was staff. It was the community really engaged with us. And so, we really got a lot of good feedback, and we're excited about the different brand elements. And we've been rolling this out. And so, first, we wanted to focus on some high visible areas. Again, trying to take some of those, we obviously could have some quick fixes, which was some of our digital and print areas, and then also just connecting with people doing apparel. But one thing we also mentioned is, you gotta, a school district's gonna take some time in fully implementing the brand. We're not gonna throw perfectly good uniforms if it is that their old brand. People are gonna continue to wear their older White Hawk apparel until that starts cycling through. You're gonna notice on facilities with the high school, we're not changing over much for logos over there, because we're going through the constructions process. Same for Grandview. So, we're really trying to pick our spots, move along, so we do this cost-effectively, but also thoughtfully, and hit some of those high priority areas. So, we, this year, are gonna continue to address more and more spaces that can last, but we're excited about this rollout. So, next, next steps, as I mentioned, we have the construction works that'll take some of those areas. We're working with our principals and directors of what are some of the next areas that they wanna improve. We're gonna have a new website that's coming through later this fall, so you're gonna see some updates there. But there's, there's a lot to it, I'm gonna tell you. You start going to the second, third layer of a website, and all of a sudden you see, oh, there's Kevin and older White Hawk apparel, need a new picture there. And so, there's, there's steps that, you know, we know that we have to continue to take. One thing that came through this process when we're doing our survey is the West Tonka name. And when we looked at it, it became clear that West Tonka and Mount West Tonka, instead of complimenting each other, they compete against each other in our brand and how people refer about us. And so, we asked, when you refer to the district, which name do you typically use? And you can see some parallel between West Tonka and Mount West Tonka. And when you talk about the high school name, you see a pretty close result, really, between those two. And so, when we dig into that a little bit, we know that there's a lot of ways that our district right now is being referred to. We count over 10 in both local, state media, but just people, how they reference about our district. And we know that if you're gonna have a strong brand, there has to be consistency in this. And so, we wanted to bring this up, and we announced back in July, and we've done some communications since then, that we're bringing this up to the board. And we called out in July that we're gonna bring this to your November school board meeting, because we, we can either say that we are going to deal with this discrepancy and just let that ride, or we're gonna try to address it. But the time to deal with it is when we're doing this construction, because of the cost that it takes when you're addressing the high school and the middle school. That name and that logo is a lot of different places. So, if we're gonna do something, this is the time to bring up that conversation. And really, what we're looking at is having an agenda item at the November 18th meeting of looking at Grandview Middle School and Mount West Tonka High School, should that be West Tonka Middle School and West Tonka High School? Now, if the board were to vote on this, this change would happen for the '25, '26 school year. So, the names would be as you read for the rest of this school year. We'd be talking about the next school year. When we look at the reasoning of the change, what we really look at is just the strengthening of our brand and the consistency of what we call our district. And you can look at some examples of the neighboring districts. You look at Orno, it's Orno Middle School, Orno Intermediate, Orno High School, the Orno School District. Wayzata, same thing. Minnetonka, the same thing. Delano, the same thing. Waconia, the same thing. And so, you have this consistency. When you go to the middle school, West Tonka Middle School, you go to the high school, West Tonka High School, you're in the West Tonka School District. And we feel like that repetition is what gets you that brand identity. We also know that it represents our community. Now, we're incredibly proud of, we're, we have over 100 years in our district, and we're incredibly proud of people that are alumni of Mount High School, people that are alumni of Mount West Tonka High School, all their stories and traditions. And we wanna represent that in our new building in multiple different ways. We wanna continue to celebrate that. But we also know where our community continues to grow and where it is. And when you look at both nonprofits and also businesses in the area, West Tonka is clearly a reference point of how people refer to the area. And so, with this, we feel like it's an important topic for the board to consider, and we just wanna make sure that people understand the rationale is that we're proud of our history, we're proud of all the different people that have and continue to walk through our halls. But when you go back to a slide like this, where we're referred to interchangeably different things, which leads to 10 different names by different people, we know that your front of your building can't have that many names. It should really be one. And so, we think that's important to bring forward to you as a board, to talk about and make an action, or not, at that November 18th meeting. And so, just wanted to announce that that will be on, on the agenda. Last comments that I would like to make, and then I'd open up to any questions. Again, thank you to Kathy and her finance team. That was, there's, there's a lot that goes to, and I joke a little bit about the room for improvement, point one, but you talk about the difference of students, and I mean, they, they really do look each year at how to improve. And so, in some ways, I'm not joking at all, because they've refined and refined and refined their processes of how
their processes of how they can really dial in. I'm thankful for our finance committee of how you work and the different staff that work, but there's a lot of hands that are involved in that. And so that's a really, really good result and something to celebrate. Congratulations Kathy and team. Questions that you have on either construction, some of the academic school name, branding, other?
Can we keep Mark too?
No, Mark gets to stay. Mark, Mark isn't allowed to. He's referencing some things back older days. We're just gonna keep it going.
I asked a question about you and Kathy, I figured I should ask about Mark.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to keep him too, yeah.
We have to rebrand Mark though. He's the machining guy now. He'll do that.
We tell.
So we're bringing up the school name at the next meeting. What happens between now and the next meeting or what, what will we have more, what more information might we have at the next meeting when we, when we vote on this or?
Well, that would be a good question if you want something in addition. What I can share with you is the information and the logic of why we think that should be brought to you. I feel, I feel as far as demonstration and evidence, the reasons why we're bringing has been presented.
Well, just to be clear, we're voting on it next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll take some time to present to you again, so there's a presentation of what it is. You're gonna see very similar things.
Did you, have you done anything for community feedback on that at all or like at the alumni? Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the alumni breakfast, but...
Yeah, so we, if I'm at a PTA meeting, a school staff, we've been bringing it up. When I go, I'll be at the community of commerce meeting coming up. And so when I'm at those meetings, we have a newsletter that's going out to our whole community that's in print. And so we've been trying to address this in email. We talked a little bit at our last board meeting, trying to get it out, but our newsletter will go out to everybody coming up. Again, I see, I see this as something of how do we strengthen who we are, not redefining who we are. We, we have a very proud history that we'll continue to hang on to and showcase.
And you know, we've talked, I think for some people, it will be an emotional issue. I mean, I'm, I'm very comfortable with the change as an alumni, but I know there will be some, I think alumni...
I've talked to a bunch of alumni.
Yeah, yeah, good.
And you know what? They seem okay with it. I haven't gotten a lot of...
Yeah, I've heard that, but you know, yeah.
You're not gonna make 100% people happy.
Oh, no.
But I mean, I, I think we're laying this out, we're making people aware of why. It's a good, good thing, so.
And if, if the board would like certain things, that's, that was a reason to be able to present to you today that if, I'm proposing to put this on the agenda and talking to Gary, that will, that's what our plan is. If you want different information, please ask me. I'm happy to prepare as we prepare agendas for you.
I was just, I wasn't implying that we need anything more. I was just asking what...
But happy to if something comes up.
Well, and thank you for all the hard work and all the...
Yes.
And everybody here, everybody here's been involved with a lot of stuff and doing a great job. It wasn't just Donna Webb, there's been a lot of work done here this year.
Yeah.
Chair moves for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Guys ready to move on to the ultimate hit? Move on to the discussion items. Chair moves for approval of action item 8A, approval of one additional special education parent professional position at Shirley Hills Primary School. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item 8B, approval of a PSEO by contract agreement with the Crown College. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves approval of action item 8C, approval of $3 increase in ticket pricing for Mount West Tonka High School theater performances. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item 8D, approval of additional .5 hours to GMS kitchen assistant, one position and OLL kitchen assistant position. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Chair moves for approval of action item 8E, approval of changing the early learning center ESC custodial position to day shift hours. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item 8F, approval of the 24-26 contract between the food service employee group and the school board of ISD 277. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair moves for approval of action item 8G, approval of the 20-24-26 contract between the custodial employee group and the school board of ISD 277. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair moves for approval of action item 8H, approval of the 24-26 contract between school special service employees group and the school board of ISD 277. Is there a second?
I'll second that one. Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item 8I, approval of resolution of governing board supporting Form A application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item 8J, approval to update AR 4231 salary guide for non-union hourly personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item 8K, approval of the first reading of policy 5220 title nine, sex nondiscrimination and grievance procedures. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Is there any further business anybody has at this time? All right, we'll see everybody in November and at this time, chair moves for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Have a good one, everybody.